Okay, let's come to order. Welcome to our work session. First item on the agenda will be consideration of the director of schools contract extension. We've all done the evaluation, we've all received copies of the evaluation. The land had a nice story in the newspaper about it. Discussion.
We're gonna decide to wait, is that what?
I don't know.
Well, I mean, Thursday night.
Thursday night, we'd, somebody, hopefully, will make a motion. So, I'm sensing you don't want to discuss this tonight, from the blank stares you're giving me, I'm going to, uh...
I mean, other than say that all the evaluations were, were very good, or exemplary, or outstanding, I don't know that there'd be anything else to say.
Other discussion? Alright, we'll take that up Thursday night. Agenda. Any items on the agenda? Consent agenda? Alrighty, takes us to number nine.
Actually, I just want to give you a heads up on number eight. Sandra Eaton Oakland Middle School will do a presentation on an international baccalaureate program that she'd like to implement at Oakland Middle. It appears it'd be a good place to implement it. I think as much as anything, it wouldn't affect zoning, and we'll talk a little more about that Thursday. It has a lot, a lot of perks to doing it, of course, there's a little expense involved. But what we hope to do Thursday is give you some background with respect to what it would take to implement it, what the advantages of doing it would be, and answer any questions you got, and then we'll follow up later with some sort of recommendation. That way, you'll have more information to make a, make a viable decision. So, she'll, she'll be up Thursday, yes, sir.
Any future plans as far as expanding this program to another campus with some distance?
You know, the thing with the middle schools, it's a little different than the high school. And she'll be able to explain a little more eloquently than I could. Are you referring to high schools, or are you talking about?
Both programs.
No, in the high school, we certainly hadn't had any intention to expand it. Now, at the middle school, it might be more doable, because you basically, your entire population at the middle school is privy to the program. You don't have to, you wouldn't accept zoning assistance in and out based on overcrowding, it's like we do now. I think it would be more doable at the middle schools, and it would expose them to, uh, you know, some foreign languages early on, and a different methodology of teaching. So, I think it's possible that you may want to expand it at some point.
Would it be viable, or is it too expensive to, at some point, think that we might be able to get all of our middle schools?
I think we said there'd be about a thirty thousand dollar cost a year, Jeff. In addition, it'll probably require two additional teaching position, uh, which is, uh, which is substantial, if you, if you multiply it times, well, how many middle schools we got? Nine or ten? Yeah. But again, it, it may be one of these deals, and that's up to you to decide. You know, it's, it's a good idea, she came forward with it. You know, do we want to go down that path right now? And oblige that kind of money, knowing that others may want the same program, that it benefits them, but that's something you'll have to decide. Ms. Jernigan into Ms. Tackin, I believe.
Donna? If I remember correctly, Ms. Eaton, wasn't she kind of spearheading that program at the high school?
Yes, sir.
So, it was kind of a natural progression that she's going?
Yeah, she was, and matter of fact, she and Ms. Spurlock have talked, and they see, and she'll talk about this, more real advantages to doing it. When they cross the road, they've been exposed to those kind of methodologies, that kind of, those kind of strategies. So, there's some real perks to doing it, I think, but yeah, she was very heavily involved.
I thought, uh, last year, if I remember, I believe, Mr. Spurlock came in and talked to us about, about the program. And, uh, and I, I thought he did a good job of presenting it, and also, he did a good job, uh, it pleased me, I thought he, I'll say, put some teeth into the program and continuity with it.
That's right, yeah. Tim?
I met with Ms. Eaton concerning this, and I asked her this question, and I, and I kind of, when she talked about the additional teaching positions for Spanish, it seemed logical would be that you might be able to subtract a teaching position away from the, the high school, from the standpoint of, many of those kids will have had Spanish already, as opposed to needing it in high school, so I don't know, when you say add a, a position or two at the middle school, I'm not sure that it would be, there would not be some reduction that would, would not come out of the high school from that.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll do some research on that, too, that's a good point.
Grant?
Are there any other middle school programs like this around, or in the state? I, I haven't heard of any, I didn't know if-
No, this would be the first one.
What about any other states that might have one like that?
Oh, I'm sure there are, there's, nationally, there are a lot of them, yeah.
But, uh, we need to find out, maybe, so we can kind of see what pitfalls and, and the obvious-
And that's one of the things she would do, was, uh, there'd be some preliminary expenses for her to train, and, uh, find out a little more about the program. But, uh, she, she'll give you more information, she's got a lot of the data that you're asking about right now, that she'll talk about Thursday night.
Thank you. Aaron?
The successes that we've seen at Oakland, is there any possibility or, or plan for expanding the IB program into some other high schools?
Uh, we haven't discussed it, uh, let me see, how, we, we started at Oakland, in part, they were, how you say this? They were struggling a little bit with their image, uh, they were struggling, you know, some of the kid, there was, there was somewhat of a flight to get out of there and go to Segal, and maybe go some other places, and we wanted to do something to attract good students there, and enhance that reputation, and give them some opportunities, that maybe they otherwise, uh, wouldn't have had, so, so, that's the reason we started it. There is considerable amount of expense involved in doing it, Jeff could tell us more on Thursday if we need it. But we haven't, uh, we haven't discussed formally doing it anywhere else.
We need to be very careful about that, uh, possibility of diluting some of the good effects that it's had at Oakland, I don't think we, want to risk that right now, I don't know, that's my opinion, anyway.
Wayne?
With the, uh, the middle school, in my perception, seems to be a, a big change in, in the academic, uh, opportunities that, that are offered from elementary into high school. And if this could possibly be a work in progress at some point in time, where we could eventually have all of the middle schools with this type program to go along with the enhanced standards we presently have. You know, they're already used to, uh, change and challenging, and maybe this is another opportunity to challenge them, to get them ready for what they'll experience in high school with the Tennessee Diploma Project. So, you know, I don't think it's anything we can do immediately, but maybe, as, as a future plan, that we may be able to incorporate it over, over a long period of time.
Donna?
You know, number nine, priority goal number one. I don't want to get to the IB program and get to thinking about the IB program, uh, to the point of expanding it. We've got an IB program, we've got, uh, magnet schools now, uh, and you know, our number one priority was to look at, uh, uh, technical education. And if, all of a sudden, if we goes back towards expanding the IB program into all schools, then that takes away, in my opinion, from, uh, our number one priority. And that is, uh, expanding the opportunities for technical education career.
Good point. Keep our eyes fixed on what we've stated or-
I'd say, I'd tell you what, uh, Ms. Jernigan, and, uh, it, it, we've put in your packet, a folder that contains all the, I think you're gonna find it pretty interesting, all the CT offerings at each school that we currently have, and also, the different pathways a student can embark on. This is separate from what you're talking about, but it's pretty interesting to see the CT offerings we have now in place. I think, and, and Mr. Odom and, uh, Ms. Kay Nixon will do a presentation tomorrow on priority one goal. Pretty amazing, about sixty-seven percent of the high school students take a CTE course. I, I didn't realize it was that high, pretty doggone amazing. And when you factor in those that take more than one or two, it's, it's actually above, there are more course offerings than there are students. I'm not saying that exactly right, but, uh, it's pretty impressive, too. So, and given the fact that Kay Nixon is, came to me and, uh, Mr. Odom, the three of us met the other day, and she's asking for fourteen to sixteen more CTE courses. I think there's, oh, teachers, pardon me, I think there's a general recognition that kids are gravitating that way, you know, where they want to take CTE courses. Of course, it's changed in the olden days, we used to have woodworking, general building trades, uh, a lot of machine shops, and some of those other courses. They've called a phone by the wayside a little bit, and they're taking different kind of CTE courses. But I think you should be impressed with what we're offering, and how we're, for whatever reason, there's, there are going to be needing of course offerings, but, anyway, if you would, between maybe now and Thursday, look at that information, it'll help you with the presentation they have.
Other discussion on number eight? Sure?
We're looking for continuing AP with, you have anything on review?
I couldn't hear you.
It's called work or teaching, the AP, with the middle school and high schools are already in place. So, for those kids who will be going, it needs to be concerned about that academic, you know, they just kind of get the kids ready for that.
Okay, we're ready for nine. Is that a Thursday?
No, that'll be Thursday, yeah.
Okay, number ten?
Ten, special course request. The instruction department has requested permission to make an application to offer credit for special courses under the following guideline. Rule 520-1-3-05-2A, local school systems may offer special courses not listed in 520-1-3-06 on experimental basis. Minister of Education must approve each course in advance each year. After three years, the course may become permanent part of the local school program upon approval by the State Board of Education. And we recommend that you do offer those course offerings, and they're reflected below, I don't see a real need to read them all.
No.
High School 101 is, is what?
High School 101.
Number seventeen.
Donna, we come up here so we can-
Yeah, I'm not sure what one of them is. I can't tell you what Python is, either.
It's a CTE course, very similar to where we used to spend nine weeks in one area of CTE, and nine weeks in another. It kind of introduces the students to different areas of CTE, so when they get to high school, they have a better idea of what they might want to do. It's very similar to that. The state dropped it, so we brought it back kind of as a special course, to be able to do some of those things like that.
And the strength and conditioning, that's obviously a trend this year, with the high schools.
Yeah, uh, let me tell you the best way to explain it. Students required to take two units PE, one PE, one, the second half would be wellness, and another half, something else. Beyond that, obviously, uh, used to be referenced as weightlifting. Now, with twenty-eight course offerings, and you only need twenty-three to graduate, a lot of them will offer credit in weightlifting. State, I presume that it will approve it. Not totally crazy about it, but at the same time, uh, probably value to it.
Especially if they're getting some cardiovascular opportunity here, so.
Tim?
I've been in this situation before, I know what this can be like, that these can turn into, uh, football classes, or something along that line. I think as a board, we just want to make sure that principals are aware, that all students are eligible to take these classes, and that-
That's right.
Cannot be turned into a, a football, or a basketball, or a wrestling class, or something like that. Now, all that said, it may, it, it may turn into that, but I think we want to make very clear that all students are eligible to take these classes.
Right.
Grant?
For the public, and I guess for me, too, and probably the board, could someone come to the podium and explain the mechanism, how these get started and, and request, and how, how it gets into this?
Well, it's just creative on the part of the school, they, they solicit ideas, they welcome new ideas, and we submit them to the state. And like we said before, after the third, third proposal on any given course, it can be passed into, into permitted effect, and that's how they get, uh, they get offer.
But I, I guess I'd want a little more, uh, the process from, from the, from the start, is it, is a group of teachers, or the?
No, the principal will submit.
The principal primarily?
Yeah, you know, he'll make a, he or she will make a, a request, we'll bring it, if we think it warrants coming on the agenda, we'll do it. I think it's also for, uh, does everybody know what program, programming in Python is? Jeff, you know, don't you?
I looked it up.
Pretty interesting to see some of the new courses offered at Central Magnet.
Now, you gotta tell us what programming in Python is.
Tell them what programming in Python is, yeah.
It basically incorporates both Linux, uh, Apple math language, and various internet.
It's like a little Cobalt. All those things.
Computer line, okay.
That was.
Okay, other questions on these, uh, course requests?
If we, there's a disproportionate number of first-year requests, is that, uh, typical? I haven't seen this before, but, you know, is first year, uh, kind of a test, and, and some of these go away, and never make it to second year? Or is there a, a real push for, for new opportunities?
I don't know, do you, do you know, Donna, I, I don't know if it's disproportionate, again, we're expanding the twenty-eight credit offerings, and maybe, seven classes a day, that may be why there's been more requests. I don't, I don't, you know, have an idea?
Some of them will go away sometime, it, it'd be student enrollment driven, so if it doesn't take off, it's gonna be it?
Mark, I can add to that, it, and it also will be very much faculty-driven. You know, if you have a, if a faculty person in there that is good at it, or, or students will migrate to, the program has a much better chance to take place. Sometimes, it's just not a good fit, faculty-wise or otherwise, in a new program, it doesn't make sense. And also, the, the name that's on that, uh, course oftentimes will lend itself to being a very positive thing. So, I think it's important that we name them the right thing, because sometimes, the name itself drives them away, where if you rename it to something that, a little bit more into their language, or whatever, it, it, it will cause them to be attracted to it a bit more.
Grant?
Did we ever check with other schools before we get this far, to see what their experiences have been, and, and how long they last normally, or some of these new ones? I just looked like a-
Their systems?
Yeah, the systems, right, yeah. Uh, it seemed, because it has to be a little bit more expensive to, to come up with a lot of new, uh, the programs, and, and to staff it, and, and to, uh, have the facilities ready, but it seemed like to me that you would want to kind of build upon other systems' experience before you even, you know, tried to go for it.
I don't necessarily check. I'm sure a lot of them are being taught another system.
Other discussion? Donna?
I, I just want to add, I'm not as concerned about the courses. Of course, I want them to be state-approved and all that, but, uh, I'm more concerned that we're utilizing the people, that principals are utilizing those teachers effectively in that school. That, uh, they're, yeah, if they're supposed to be teaching a full load, that they are, and not teaching a half a load, or doing, doing things that, uh, we don't, we don't want to pay them, uh, supplements to do, and then we turn around and fix their schedule where they take it by without teaching.
I agree, I, uh, I certainly think that everybody, the elementary and middle teachers full load, I don't think this is a new revelation. Obviously, in the high school, with six hundred kids supervised, and they have to have a little help in there, and sometimes, I'm sure the high schools use a, uh, use a coach, or somebody, in lieu of teaching a class. It may be an expensive way to do it, but I think those people are visible, the kids look up to, and they'd have some leadership that supervises, and otherwise, you'd have sheer chaos. I know most of the high schools try to have six, eight people in the cafeteria with six hundred high schools, and I think if you did, and you probably have kind of student anarchy on your hand in there, they'd probably take over, but we, we do check schedules, and we value exactly what you're talking about. I mean, it's critical that we do get them in there. There may be an exception or two where it's, where a high school might need to veer from that.
I, I understand how important it is to have supervision where and when it's needed, and, uh, and you can't put enough assistant principals, uh, that's not economical to do either. But, I hate for, the old elementary teacher and the middle school teachers, they just don't get any breaks.
That's true.
And, uh, we, and those high school teachers, sometimes, I, I think they do, and I know, I will not, if, my daughter will not agree with that, but-
Gary?
I've got a question, on this, one of these courses, strength and conditioning, one, two, and three. I guess first year, you just have course one, wouldn't you?
You still got your basic PE requirements, and we talked about that a little today, and I, you know what, we probably ought to hook up with the high school principal, make sure we got some, some definition, but, you know, I think if you take PE, second year, you take wellness, I believe, or something else, I don't know how they get three units of, of, of the next three, do you?
The sophomores have to have one and a half, if you remember, the legislature added the other half, and then you got your wellness in there, too, and this would be in addition to that. When you submit to the state, you have to submit the teacher's name, curriculum, what you plan to do with it, before that approval.
But I think his point, Donna, is, like, for example, you, say you take your one and a half the first two years, and hopefully, everybody's four years and out of there, so it would be graduation requirement. Where can they fit in the third unit of, of?
That seven-period day is about the only way they're gonna be able to do it.
Well, surely, we're not doing two periods at once, let's do some legwork on that between now and Thursday.
Let me ask it this way, uh, I thought this is what he was asking, if a student is not taking conditioning one, why would there need to be a two in the curriculum right now? Or a three in the curriculum right now, because wouldn't they have to have, have taken one to get to two, and so forth? That's, that's the question that I would have. Is there, is there a need for a second-year course in the first year? And if the first-year course works, then they should come back and request a second-year course next year, if that, if it seems to be necessary.
I'm gonna let Mr. Odom answer that, he put them on there.
The bus I heard rolling over in the car.
We, we, Ms. Tackin, I'll answer that by saying, we'll give you a, an answer Thursday night.
Fair enough, I mean, it, I mean, there could be some logic to, in place that, that we perceive that that's gonna happen, let's go ahead and get them all approved at one time.
I think there may have been, I'd have to go back, I mean, I think there may have been some weightlifting credit issue, issue in the past, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Maybe it was phrase weightlifting, but we'll go, we'll go back and check it.
Okay, number eleven.
Uh, courses offered for credits in grade nine through twelve, Board of Education Policy 4.201 states in part, "A listing of courses offered for credit in grades nine through twelve will be approved annually by the board." Note, the Tennessee Department of Education has notified systems that a new list of course titles and course numbers will not be released until at least February the fifteenth. There may be some course name adjustments when updated state information is perceived, and we recommend that you approve the list of course for credit, Russ County, grade nine through twelve, and two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve is presented.
Discussion.
These are just the opportu, not all of these are offered in every high school, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, but they're, they're available, they're approved and available?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, twelve.
Financial matters. A general purpose school budget amendment, this amendment budgets an additional eleven thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars in the state's early childhood education grant, count forty-six, five, one, five, to the system implies the funds towards the medical insurance line item in this program, account seventy-three, four hundred, dash, two, oh, seven. The amendment also amends capital outlay function in order to transfer sixty-one thousand one hundred sixty dollars to the building program fund, so that the seventy-five thousand six hundred dollar Excel Energy Change Order, approved at the February sixteen, two thousand eleven board meeting, can be kept with the rest of the lighting central project. Fourteen thousand four hundred forty dollars in grant funding will also flow through the building program. And we recommend that you amend an additional eleven thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars in state early childhood education grant revenues, count forty-six, five, one, five, to increase related medical insurance budget, count seventy-three, four hundred, dash, two, oh, seven. And to amend the capital outlay function is presented in order to transfer sixty-one thousand one hundred sixty dollars to the building program fund for funding in the seventy-five thousand six hundred dollar Excel Energy Change Order.
Discussion. Grant?
When will that program, uh, be, I guess, matured, or be finalized? It's, it's ongoing process, obviously, with the new schools, but-
Yeah, we've got another step with respect to funding at Excel Energy, what is it, did the state gotta approve it?
Once I have the approved minutes from the last meeting, I can apply for that fourteen thousand four hundred with the state.
And the-
Do that on that line, yes.
And the state will get, how long's it take to turn around from the state?
It's hard to tell, Mr. Gill.
Hopefully, a few weeks, we, hopefully, we have it done by the, start of next school year. Yeah, the work, yeah, have it paid for, yeah.
Yeah, other discussion? On that item. Okay, takes us to general discussion. Wayne?
Mr. Gill, at some point in time, with all the fish, energy efficient initiatives that, that you and Mr. Clardy have, uh, put in place, geothermal, uh, the lighting, uh-
Lighting upgrades.
This, uh, the sensors in the classrooms. At some point, with our older schools and our, our newer schools, will there be some kind of opportunity to make some comparisons, to, to show the public what has been saved through these initiatives? Because I know there's some, there's some money on the front end, like geothermal and metal roofs, that, that we have to spend, but the savings over, over the long term. So, I don't know if we're there yet, but at some point in time, I hope that the public would understand the savings.
I mean, originally, and Gary, you can speak to that, or Jeff, either one, but originally, we said there'd be a seven-year payoff on the lights. And at that point, uh, the cost savings, coupled with what we were paying on the light, Gary, you're shaking your head.
Oh, go ahead, no, I was trying to be, it's great.
Yeah, reflecting back, uh, I think it was seven years to pay it off, and then you recapture the multiple dollars over time, and it was a four-year payoff on the sensors, wasn't it, Jeff?
The, the Alice, the, the first project, when rates were so high, and they may be headed back up, our, our payoff was looking like it was going to be less, more the four-year range. The sensors that we just did are probably going to be a bit longer payoff. The, the systems they're just now doing for the combined project, that's where they're seeing a big savings. But the sensors are probably gonna take a little bit longer to pay off.
But we are experiencing savings.
Oh, absolutely.
Substantial.
And in twenty thirteen, I don't remember the, the timing of the year, the time of the year that we'll make our final payment, we'll have the initial project paid off, and at that point, the savings will really start, we will no longer make any principal interest payments, so all of our savings will be flowing through to us, except for this matter of sensors.
Gary?
I was just going to say that the technology is changing so rapidly now, and we are incorporating some things, if we can afford them, and its payoff is quick enough on the high school. For instance, now, uh, we have, uh, some light level sensors, so we know what the, what- So we know what the light level should be in the room. If there's more light than that in there, then these sensors turn the lights down to save electricity. Also, LED parking lot lights, which will conserve a lot of energy for football games and those kinds of things. So there's some opportunities for savings beyond those areas that we've worked on up to this point.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I do have a question. You got past the technical pathways. SPOS on this little gizmo right here, what does that mean? There's a red SPOS on many of these pathways that are listed.
What page are you on, Tim?
I look at Blackman High School, I have the front page, for example. There's a red SPOS, program of study, I assume, is what the POS stands for, but what does the S stand for? So several, some have it and some don't, and that's all the way through the book.
Let Mr. Gill put this one together.
Sounds like Kay Nixon, but-
Suppose. Other discussion?
We've got a seven oh vote on Eagle Bowl's design through Health Ed.
It's good news, yeah.
Budget meets, is it eleven? Is it?
Ten.
Ten.
I don't think, we haven't met since the official high school vote, I don't think. Ever, the full commission, so that certainly calls for celebration. Thank you for your help and leadership on that, Mr. Gill and Mr. Clardy. That was a big victory, so we need a little celebration on that. Other discussion? If not, we'll see you Thursday night.